Good evening and welcome to the city council's special meeting of Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Two items on the agenda. The first of these is the Aim Norman Comprehensive Plan Update and Transportation Master Plan. Turn it over to you guys for the do the dig.
Mayor, thank you very much. I'm Brett Cavanagh with Carver, and I have James Walden, who's one of our lead urban planners that are going to present today. But our AIM Transportation Subcommittee Chair, Mr. Hader, said he would like to have just a few moments of your time to talk before we get into the presentation. So Jim?
Of course. I want to personally thank you for my opportunity to serve. It's been a joy being on the steering committee. This is my third comp plan, and I'm telling you right now, it's my last one.
Only another 25 years, come on.
Doing all the master plans with the comp plan at the same time, I'm sure has been a burden on staff, has been a brilliant way to do it. It has gone really, really well. As to transportation, we've just had an awesome committee. I could run through it real quick. Chuck has been on every committee the city's had, but he's also a director at RTA. Trey is certainly one of our leading developers and one of the most innovative there. Adam Ross was real focused on safety, which is always, every time we did a matrix, safety came out number one for everybody. Carleen Smith has spent a career in transit. Olivia, again, was really focused on safety and helped out a lot there. Most of all of you know Chris Nanny. He's been one of my champions on ADA and uses the bus system, which really helped, especially in some of our microgroups there. Hal Cantwell has been a champion of the cycling community for many, many years. PJ Hawkins is a traffic engineer. He literally writes traffic impact studies for a living. We got to analyze some of the, some of the bigger problems. He was a tremendous asset. And Lance Lemkin is the director of the airport. We had, again, diverse. It was almost like everybody brought their own specialty to the table. But it was a long process. It was a good process. We had, I can't say enough nice things about Carver. Brett, James, Mike, Ashley, they gave us tools we didn't know existed. We had interactive maps. I think we basically had everything we asked for. And again, then staff, David, Scott, Jane is hiding. Staff was busy during this, but again, gave us everything we needed. It's been a good experience. I think we've got a good product, and I think you're going to get a really good comp plan to boot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Jim.
Appreciate the kind words.
So let's go ahead and get started. A little bit about what our role was. Our role really was not to develop a new master plan. It was really to update the 2014 Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And with that, we took those five guiding principles from the 2014 and we applied them to move them forward with this. Obviously, Norman is a special place to live to each and every one of us. Mobility, maintenance, improve our existing infrastructure, being good fiscal stewards of the city's funding, and then make sure that we enhance economic vitality. We took all of those five principles and we applied them to everything that we did with this update. So how is this going to relate to the other master plans that are going to be updating? Well, just think about this. Land use really kind of drives a lot of things. You need good transportation to get to the land use, okay? Stormwater, you need bridges. You also have the ability to utilize green space, green infrastructure, those kinds of things. Those two go hand in hand going forward. Parks, you need a good trail system. Mobile, mobility to get from one park to another park without getting out on a road. Housing, you have to be able to get to and from your house to a place of employment or a place of enjoyment. And then water and wastewater. Transportation is always used, the right of way, the public right of way for their utilities to go through. So all of these do have some common theme and connectivity as we go through this. And so as we develop the plan update, we always kept that in mind going forward. James? So a little bit about what our scope of work was. We really wanted to take a snapshot in time of today. And when you think of transportation, it's not just roads and bridges. It's not just trails. It's traffic. It's parking. It's transit. It's aviation. It's all of those components make up your transportation system here in the city. And so what we wanted to do was take a snapshot in time, look at what historically had been done, and we'll talk about those in just a second, and then update those to what we envision is going to happen in the next 20 years for roads, traffic, bridges, parking, aviation going forward. And so the next slide should show a little bit of what we've done. These, you know, six primary previous studies that we went through and in-depth chased through and see what has been done since 2014 up to today and applied some of those things that we know have happened in our community. The Encompass 2045 Plan, that's ACOG, that's the Metropolitan Area Planning Organization. We looked at what their 2045 plan is going to do, and then we make sure that what we are proposing is going to work in concert with that. The Go Norman 21 Plan, Taylor, has a great plan that's just recently really been evolving. And so we made sure that we had, we looked at that and made sure that it is complementary with any of the recommendations that we have going forward. Obviously, the 2014 Plan, the 2018 Parking Study, that was a joint venture between the city and the county. There's some very good things in that plan. There was a lot of resources and time spent on that plan. Doesn't mean that we needed to have, didn't need to go back and revisit some of them to make sure that they are still applicable today. University of Oklahoma, Max Westheimer's airports, that is a university-owned facility located within the city. It is not the city asset. So we wanted to make sure that we understood what their master plan was going forward. And then the RTA that's mentioned over there is Regional Transit Authority as well, and what their proposed plans are for regional transit. James? The other thing that was really key to our development of the plan update was public input, you know, in the public workshops that we went out to. I think we made at least five or six open houses. We did public surveys. We did internal surveys with our steering committees and our subcommittees. We were very fortunate, pop-up events, art walk, things of that nature, to solicit input from the community on what was really important from a transportation standpoint. A little bit of a spoiler alert, congestion was one of the big things. Mobility, connectivity, active transportation, those are probably the very top responses that we got. James, is there any that I'm leaving off here?
No.
Okay. So, you know, getting that public feedback is always good. And what, what we have kind of seen, and again, there's been a kind of a paradigm shift when you start thinking about transportation. You know, normally, everybody had blinders on. Transportation meant vehicular transportation. Nowadays, it doesn't mean that much, particularly in a university town, where you have a lot of students that may or may not have vehicles. So mobility, walkable space, those are good things now that aren't being shoved off to the side. They're being pushed more towards the forefront. Now, don't get me wrong, every Oklahomans is going to have a car. They want to drive from point A to point B. The city of Norman's 150-some square miles, not everybody can walk from one side of Norman to the other. If they can, they're a much better person than me. So we're still going to have vehicular transportation. It's still going to drive a majority of projects and going to take the most money. But we now are starting to see that shift and see that ability to commit funds and find projects that serve more people than just the vehicular traffic people. So let's kind of jump in here a little bit. We'll pick off some of the low-hanging fruit and get to the more difficult projects later on. Westheimer, we'll start here. 2024, Max Westheimer had their Airport Master Plan approved by the Federal Aviation Administration. It had several long-range projects through there with the total cost of about $58 million worth of work through here. Now, city's not going to pay that 58 million. That's, that's an OU thing. But one of the things that we need to be cognizant of is what they call the runway protection zone. And so you see these, you know, dark red areas, those are the ends of the runway. And you see they actually get outside the limits of what they call outside the fence of OU's property. And those go into the university, to the city's right of way. Those are some of the things that we recommend as policies is to help protect with that. And if you go to the next slide, should have some of these recommendations. Now, there's a lot of ways you guys can go through this, but I think one of the things is, we wanted to follow a state law that was passed in 2011. And quite honestly, I'm not an expert at that. Ms. Beth in the back probably is. But it's something that we think we can hang our hat on when we start talking about policy recommendations for protection of those runway protection zones. Another is, we want to make sure that we provide more transit opportunities to the airport. Now, we're starting to think about the Aviation Academy. You know, how are kids going to get to the academy? They're going to ride a bus. They're going to walk. They're going to use their bike. Other than a vehicle, how can they get there? So we want to make sure that we have a strong transit system with that. And again, with Taylor's group, we'll obviously start looking at that once it comes online. And then continue to improve the municipal infrastructure around, around the airport, and that's roadways. We want to be able to get people off I-35 trucks and traffic, off I-35, and quickly and efficiently get over to the airport, which is a general aviation airport, which means they haul freight as well. So those are some of the recommendations that we'll have in the report going forward for aviation. Parking plan. We mentioned earlier the, the investment the county and the city made in 2018. And that's still a very good viable plan. It really addresses the university, addresses downtown, it addresses campus corner. It also now takes into account the transit center as well. And so that coordination between the city and the county still needs to be there, our recommendation. Their plan is to build a parking garage, mixed use. How that's going to be operated, I think is still that hybrid model. If you're familiar with the 2018 plan, basically, they want us to hire somebody out to run the train, or to run the parking program in the city of Norman. That's going to be a policy recommendation that you all need to address and not, not so much for us. We want to invest in innovative solutions, technologies. You know, nowadays, we can walk up to a meter and pay with our phone. We want to continue to be able to do those, look at those strategically and see what's best for Norman. And then develop a long-range plan for maintenance and operation of your parking facilities. Next slide. So there, I've just talked about all of those. I'm sorry. So again, you work closely with the university and the county, I think is the biggest thing taken from that. The other point, and this is one of the things that we talked with, with Chris and Carleen during our microgroup deal, is make sure, now that we have a good transit center, that's close to the depot, that's close to the parking garage, that we have that connectivity, that ADA connectivity. So within those two or three blocks there, somebody wants to stop at the train station, get off, go down to the transit center and catch a bus, and go back home from their daily commute into the work in for Oklahoma City, that's the, that's the conduit that we really want to focus on. So next, the transit plan, again, Taylor's got a great plan that they've been working on. It's been evolving as things go through here. No need to change that. You see the recommendations here. These are basically straight out of the 21 document with a little bit of tweaking going forward. And again, it's a great transit plan. As things develop around University and North Park, Aviation Academy, obviously, some of those transit routes may change a little bit. Those are things from that plan that is flexible, that you'll continue to update and grow as the city continues to grow going forward. One other thing is commuter rail. We talked about a little bit about that, the RTA. Chuck may probably talk a little bit more about that if we need to. You know, the three potential stops on the RTA route, Tecumseh Road, obviously, the depot downtown, and then somewhere south of Highway Nine. I want to blank. What's the road?
Cedar Lake.
Cedar Lake, thank you. And then maybe even a game day stop near the duck pond. Those are things that will need to be adjusted as things come online. Again, you all get the vote, we all get the opportunity to vote on that later for RTA. Excellent. Bridge Plan Update. This is relatively a new plan. Basically, we're mirroring the 23 bond program. You all have a very good 10-year outlook for this. We don't see any need to change any of that at this point in time. You see the bridges that are being replaced or rehabilitated in this first tranche of projects, and then other projects that may be, as money becomes available, be updated or rehabilitated as well. Again, there's approximately 90 bridges the city is responsible for. That's a lot of, a lot of the structures, infrastructure that you all have to worry about. And so we'll continue on the recommendations, I think the next slide, to follow up on that same program that the city has already started down. And that's the annual inspection of those bridges, where we rate the bridges. And those could change a little bit over the next few years. You may have some older structures that, right now, may not be structurally deficient, but by age into four, 10 years, now become that. And so their priority may go up and down. And so whenever the city staff looks at these on an annual basis and kind of evaluates and ranks that criteria, just understand that that could change and fluctuate a little bit going forward. So we, we want to follow this plan. It's a very good plan. It's a very sound plan as well. We want to continue with the inspection of that. But we also want to dovetail any potential projects with our stormwater brethren over here. You know, we talked about earlier that interaction between the two plans, and making sure that if there is a stormwater issue that comes up, hey, let's make sure that we may, may have a bridge project that may help facilitate potential funding, that we can address all of those things at the same time. Next, Traffic Update. Again, congestion was a big, a big thing from the public, also safety through this. And so we went back and took a snapshot of the last 10 years of safety improvements. And the heat map that you see over here, you know, talks about the, the crashes, the total crashes and the fatalities and stuff. And, and the light green dots, I mean, that's across our entire community here. But you start to really see some of the more urbanized areas. 12th Avenue East, a lot of, a lot of crashes in that area. Main Street Downtown, those are probably pedestrian-related ones as well. And so now it gets back to, you know, what can we do for active transportation? So we did go back and take a look at that. And from this data download, let's say, next one, we came up with some future studies that may help us identify some projects or may help us identify why we're having these crashes. And these are all throughout the city. You know, we kind of have spots and everything like this. And some of these are already going to be intersection improvements. But we want to make sure that we study the other alternatives there might be to improve an intersection, to make it more safe through that. Next one should be some recommendation. You know, utilize the ACOG Safety Plan to look at all modes of transportation. Again, I think that's one of the big things. You know, the safe routes and safe schools and safe streets for all. All of those are great policies. You know, develop a more uniform signage for our bike paths. That's something that Marty with RDG was very adamant about, you know, that we may have a bike path here or a bike lane here that goes to nowhere, but it doesn't tell me how to get back to another trail or another path. So we want to make sure that we're looking at those kinds of things. The other thing that we've already kind of done, a working model, is a roundabout policy. We've helped David and Scott with a criteria that is objective in determining if an intersection rates well for a roundabout, or does it still need to be a traditional four-legged stop type intersection? And so we've already done that, and the safe routes for school. And then continue, you know, chasing after grants. I know they're very competitive, and I know that is frustrating when we don't win grants through that, but there's still dollars out there for safety. And we need to do everything we can to, to continue to go chase those dollars, particularly when we start talking about safety for pedestrians, students, things of that nature. I think we'd be a little bit remiss before we jump into the roadway network and the active transportation, if we didn't at least touch on, you know, what's left on the bond programs. And so what we did is try to at least get an idea for you all of what's left, what's under construction, what's in design, and what's waiting on, you know, funding or is planned through here. And this was something that came from our subcommittee meeting, that they wanted to make sure that we had this information and provide that. Again, there are a couple of things that really are concerning. ODOT and ACOG have changed their funding cycle or funding cycle, funding criteria from when a project may have been planned eight years ago to where it is today. And it continues to evolve and change all the time. And that's frustrating whenever you start planning these projects, because sometimes it takes three, four, five years to get into the queue before you can get them constructed. So if the criteria changes, and you've been working towards this goal, and now you have to back up and work to this goal, it delays the project. And that's very frustrating. I know it's frustrating for staff. It's frustrating for residents as well. The other big thing is the recent inflation that we're seeing with construction. ODOT threw out a term, a statistic last month or so, that concrete, asphalt, those items have jumped almost 60% in the last 18 months. So projects that were scheduled and estimated in 2019, now you may see an inflation of 30, 40, 50, 60% on top of that. And so now that puts more burden back on the design and staff, is how do we meet the intent of those projects and stay within budget? So those are some challenges. City is still fully committed to, to these projects. They are going to get done. I think that's the easiest way to me into that slide right there. Okay. We talked about land use, and this is really kind of the biggest driver for transportation. And up until about a month or month and a half ago, really, the, the land use plan had shifted and adjusted one way or the other through here. And so when we all finally agreed that this is the land use plan, that all the, all of the master plans we're going to get updated from, this is what we are starting from. And this is what we, again, start looking at, how do we connect those people, places, and things with transportation? So this is kind of our basis. We'll see you on the next slide. We talked a little bit about active transportation. I'm going to let James take, take the helm for a second.
So active transportation, whether it was for the project overall with the, with the comprehensive plan, or specifically with our transportation plan update, one of the loudest, clearest messages that we heard was, we want more safe, connected, active transportation routes. And so what you're seeing with this particular map is sort of a concept of the overall plan that we have for active transportation, active transportation network, kind of expressed in the way that you would, you would express it for a transit system of lines and routes. So these, all these different colored lines represent sort of the major backbone of the type of system that we're proposing. And one of the messages that we heard very clearly as well was, we want low-stress routes. We want areas where we're not put right next to cars, where it might be, certain types of users feel very comfortable, but the majority of potential users do not feel comfortable. And so with this, developing this out, what we largely focused on was trying to create a network of greenways, which greenways would be sort of trails that are off and away from a street. They're all, maybe along a utility corridor, along a greenway or a creek or a river that is kind of stinks through an area. Those are, those are the most comfortable, most interesting for users. And then additionally, side paths. And side paths are really just a trail, if you think about Robinson, the, the large sidewalk, or some of the improvements that have been made around some of the interchanges, where you have a very work, very wide sidewalk. Those would be what we call side paths, where you have a nice buffer, but you're not putting the pedestrians, you're not putting the bike users in mixed with the traffic. And so it's a lower-stress environment for those folks. So by and large, the entirety of what you see on this that is planned is either that side path type of facility or a greenway type of facility with exclusion of, of an existing portion that's on Lindsay Street, where we've got those bike lanes and that, and that connectivity. And, and that, that is deliberate, as I said, as a focus on trying to encourage more use by reaching out and providing the types of facilities that more people want to use. There's, there's this kind of shift in the active transportation and bikes, where we're, we're shifting that connotation of, when we think about a cyclist, typically, people are thinking about somebody that is male, that is in Lycra, and that they, they are determined, or that, everybody wants to be, you know, the next Lance Armstrong, right? That's the way that we conceive of that. Trying to change that perception to it being something where it's people on bikes, that we're talking about people from the very, very young children to the very, very old. Facilities that accommodate everyone. The, when you look at studies, they have the highly confident or somewhat confident riders, and those represent a very small fraction, that Lycra crowd. But you have the interested but concerned crowd that constitutes a majority of potential users. And those are the types of folks that are just not going to use a lot of those high-stress facilities. They want side paths. They want greenways. Additionally, one of the focuses that we have with here are connection points to surrounding communities, so that this, this can sort of evolve and work into a regional greenway network as well. And so this really, I think, construction of this, this could be, in a lot of ways, transformative. I'm, I have lived previously in Northwest Arkansas. I have seen the types of change that has occurred simply because of the investment in active transportation and how it has transformed that area and really made it a destination. And I think that same type of opportunity exists here. Looking at some of our, our roadway updates with...
Sorry, I should be running the...
Oh, no. With some of our, our plan updates, we started, earlier in the slideshow, you saw the, sort of the, the proposed transportation plan map that represented from the 2014. One of the things that we've done is gone in and updated this proposed transportation plan map and changed the classifications. And those classification changes were really meant, and meant to accommodate in line with the future land use. So as we see areas that are transitioning from rural land use to a more urban or suburban type of land use, making sure that we have transportation infrastructure or are planning for transportation infrastructure that aligns with those particular uses. That transportation land use connection is one of the most important connections in planning that, that exists. A large focus on safety. We have some of the special, special corridors, one of which is Alameda Street, focusing on that as a potential special corridor that would have special safety treatments like roundabouts and a three-lane cross-section through there that really could be a very strong asset for the community and... a very strong asset for the community at a nice quality of life, quality of place corridor. We made sure with our updates that we were consistent with the ACOG Encompass 2045 Plan. And then we gave our subcommittee, we gave our subcommittee a web map and we challenged. We said, give us as many comments as you can. And so, man, they delivered for us. And so we got specific points in all these different locations throughout the city that we were able to give them, like, okay, that's a really good comment. That's a really, let's incorporate that. And that was really, really beneficial to us through the process. When you look at some of the major changes, so the purple highlight areas where something was added, the yellow represents where something was changed. What you see is by and large, in a lot of these yellow areas, those are changes that might have shifted from rural to urban in terms of the cross-section. But additionally, in areas where it's off the section line road, we're taking a concept that was originally developed with that 2014 Comprehensive Transportation Plan and taking it to the next logical step in its conclusion. That idea was that we're going to build a more robust collector networks, a network of collector streets throughout the city. The traditional idea in transportation planning is is that a local street dumps onto a collector street, collector street dumps onto an arterial, arterial dumps onto a freeway, right? We're kind of putting a line in there where we say a local street, by and large, is going to empty into a collector, but a collector may have a continuous long route where you might go four or five miles on a collector that is a relief route to an arterial. The idea behind this is that if there's better connectivity, there's more routes to get places. When things get congested, people will use alternate routes. And it's kind of the basic, applying that idea that works so well with a grid system that's within an older part of town where you just, if traffic's backed up, let's get off Main Street and go over to the next street. Sort of applying some of those ideas to a larger street network. This also is really meant to align with some of the shifts within the land use plan where we're looking at more mixed use. Again, Norman's going from 130 to 185. That's an evolution. That's an evolution in a lot of ways on what type of community this is. And so in part, part of this is making sure that our transportation evolves with that land use as we move forward. And then additionally, we reviewed for constructability. That's another thing where we had some existing collectors that were proposed to go through flood plains, areas that were going to cost a lot of money, but potentially for developers, we said, well, those probably aren't the best ideas. And so we took them off.
You want me to jump back in? Okay. So as we kind of wrap up the transportation part of the roadway network, again, we want to carry forward some of the non-committed projects from 2014. We want to make a nod to the remaining bond program projects. But now we started looking at, okay, all of those things plus the land use map, what do we need to look at? And some of the things that really are kind of highlighted projects here, we really needed a east-west corridor to allow to get across I-35. Not only with vehicular traffic, but again, we started looking at active transportation. How can we get at the north end of town? How do we get across I-35? ODOT has a planned overpass in their I-35 corridor study that's about to wrap up right now. We plan on utilizing that as our means of access over I-35. That now opens up when we talk about the active transportation plan, how do we get around Norman? Well, now we have that north end component that we've always been kind of lacking at the very north end. You also, James mentioned the East Alameda, Alameda Special Corridor. He talked a little bit about the three-lane roadway sections through this, but what we also envision is a very active transportation component to this, side paths. Being able to get from downtown Norman to one of Norman's finest recreational assets by bike, by jogging and not be in traffic. This is a great opportunity for us to start planning that right now. Then you start looking at the activities around the lake. You know, the county has talked about some recreational opportunities out on the north side of the lake. We have Highway Nine and we can get to the south end of the lake, but we don't have anything to get to the north side of the lake. This is a great opportunity for that. And then East 48th Avenue, based on the land use, that's the next big north-south corridor that we need to look at. It's also a safety issue when you start looking at those section line intersections. It is also part of the Encompass 2045 Plan that ACOG talked about and converting that to a principal arterial through there. Now, what we have done is we've gone ahead and taken it from border to border going through here. Okay. You looked at the land use plan, you see a lot of development in the southeast of its plan. You see a lot of development in the northeast of it. This is also a connectivity point to Oklahoma City. This is a connectivity to more. So this is alternative routes for us to look at. There's several others. Berry Road widening to make it a three-lane, active transportation. Those kinds of things we want to look at. Cedar Lane. There's still a couple of other proposed projects. And I think one of the other neat projects, and this is one that staff recommended recently, is a new roundabout at Porter and Franklin where Broadway comes in. Makes for a great opportunity. They actually demoed the criteria spreadsheet on that one and it scored very well. So we think those are some potential 25 highlight or roadway projects that we wanted to highlight. There are others and in the plan that we have, we have about 25 listed through there. So all in all, those will get, continue to be ranked based on criteria that the subcommittee has come up with. And we'll put that into a report and hopefully wrap this up in the next week. With that, I think we're ready for questions.
Questions or comments from council?
This is a really exciting plan. I look forward to seeing it come together and get voted on.
Thank you very much. It's been a labor of love, you know? Thirty-five-year resident in Norman. You know, when I went to school here, the last thing I wanted to worry about was walking somewhere. I wanted to get on my motorcycle and go somewhere. Now, I want to be a little more active. I want people to be safe. So it is a great opportunity. I'm very invested in the plan as well as the rest of the staff, our design team as well. So we're really excited and the subcommittee. Sorry, didn't want to leave them.
Thank you. First of all, appreciate the acknowledgement of walkability, pedestrian connectivity. All those things are really important, especially I think to this council. We've tried to champion a lot of those initiatives locally. And to that point, I kind of want to talk about the road widening aspect of this. I think you alluded to it a little bit earlier when we were talking about 36th Avenue and how we've had difficulty securing federal funding to widen that road, even though it was a voter-approved project and it's, you know, been approved and we were supposed to have matching funds. But as you alluded to, the allocation formula has changed and now those kinds of projects aren't necessarily being prioritized. It's now more of the road, the pedestrian-friendly type projects. And so I just kind of want to drill down on maybe the thought process behind why a lot of widensings on this map.
So one of the things in, we can look at when we say widening, a majority of these roads in East Norman, two-lane, no shoulder. We start developing those areas and you have a 300-home subdivision dumping out on a two-lane facility. It's not going to be very good. That come up to an intersection, it's four-way stop. Now you're back to congestion, one of the biggest things that we heard from the community early on. We want to be smart in about how we do these kinds of things. One of the things, and I think Scott and I have even talked about this on another type project, is even though a roadway is proposed as a principal four-lane arterial in 2045, if we have the ability to start building it today, maybe the traffic volumes only warrant a three-lane, but we go ahead, purchase the right-of-way, move the utilities and build three lanes of that now. And that suffices for traffic safety and as traffic increases, it's easily widened to that fourth lane. Those are some of the things I think we should be considering. Again, those are staff recommendations, but those are some of the things why we need to plan on the widening. Also, it starts looking at sidewalks, side paths, those kinds of things as well.
I think if the widening that is for to add shoulders or maybe add turn lanes or something like that, I think that's absolutely viable. But building, you know, a bunch of four-lane roads out in East Norman, I think that's going to cause a lot of consternation, not just with council, but with the public in general. And so it's a cautionary tale.
Fair question.
I think that I can understand the logic, but I think, you know, putting the cart before the horse could get us into a real pickle there. You know, going back to being a sales tax city, just like every city in Oklahoma, we have to pay for maintenance on roads and everything else with sales tax. And so the more concrete you put out in a road, the more maintenance obligation there is down in the future. And so I'm just really cognizant when I see a lot of road widensings. It just, that gives me a lot of heartburn, I'll just be honest.
Fair question.
One thing I would add is we do, what we didn't necessarily present is we've got a set of prioritization criteria against which to measure projects. And so, you know, the ones that are non-committed from the existing 2014 plan, those that are on the ACOG 2045 Plan, the ones that we have here, the ones that are sort of intersection recommendations that are a result of the traffic setting. All active transportation, all of that gets ran through that prioritization criteria. And that was something that was selected by the subcommittee with priorities on safety, with priorities on connectivity, with priorities on active transportation. And so I think there's, you know, when we've got a project that may be a, you know, 2045 widening or something like that, it shows up on the map. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be prioritized as the greatest priority.
I appreciate you guys clicking on that.
Man, I'd add too that this is not a proposal for a bond issue next year.
Sure, sure.
Hopefully this plan will get updated in 10 years. But to be quite honest, it's in response to a comprehensive plan that takes us to 2045. All the yellow you see to the east is in response to comp plan. And everything's not widening. If you go back to the 2014 plan, it's long-range projects. It called for four-lane berry, four-lane flood. Really invasive projects to do in 100% developed areas. Gone back, reevaluated them, scaling that recommendation down to, at some point, looking at three lanes. Pulled the four lanes out. And again, to be honest, one, look at the evaluations on Two Way Main, I'm really happy with it. But my favorite piece of this is Alameda. Literally our first transportation meeting, we had a good, open discussion. And someone goes, well, Highway Nine is dangerous and too fast and you need to lower the speed limit. Unfortunately, it was a quick, simple answer. Sorry, it's a state highway and you're not going to like this, but the truth is they're liable to raise the speed limit. But it focused from day one on safety. I mean, I first got acquainted with Brett when he was at the front of the room at the beginning of the West Lindsay project. OU came in very active, late, a little bit late in the process. The Institute for Quality Communities was really involved there. Stephen, you may have been in some of those meetings. Huge discussions about four, five roundabouts on West Lindsay. To go in and do a roundabout where you've got a confined right-of-way as a part of a redevelopment project?
Take a lot of property.
You can't, yeah, you're looking at condemnation of commercial property and it just, you don't want to condemn anything ideally. To do it out Alameda today, you can get the right-of-way. It's ideal for it. I mean, literally, our criteria was a slower, safer alternative to get from East Norman to town.
Remember that meeting very well because the former mayor introduced me as Brett Cannabis. It sticks with my craw.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up Berry Road because that was the next one I was going to pick on. So thank you for going ahead and, you know, setting that up. I know a lot of this is focused on congestion and, you know, making sure that traffic flows easily throughout Norman, but I might be in the minority here, but I think another way to handle congestion is to put less cars on the road as well. So if we can incentivize ways for people to take a bus, ride a bike, hop on a commuter rail, whatever the other option is. I mean, I am most interested in seeing a comprehensive kind of traffic ecosystem to where traffic or cars are not the only option.
Add another piece of this, and I'll be quite honest, I'm a little apprehensive about this as an old developer. But one of the slides showed connectivity at all the half-section lines. They're not going to be straight connections there. RDG in the comp plan process has really encouraged connectivity between subdivisions. I want you all to rely on his common sense when that starts happening. One, that takes a lot of engineering on both parts. One piece may be a development day, next piece may still be a farm that has had no engineering done on it. Where I want to put my collector street may not line up topographically at all with the next piece of property if it's left up totally to me. So some of those are going to work out, some of them are. But the intent is to pull traffic off of the arterials and do just what you said. Pull the car count down, carry more of it on the collector streets interior from subdivision to subdivision.
And I think it works really well in areas that have a great street grid, but you know, somewhere around the fridges is a little more difficult, as you kind of alluded to. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed the timeline. I was wondering, sorry for coming in late, but was there a map with an overlay of the land use and might have like a heat map of like the densities and when they are expected to kind of evolve? Because I don't foresee the east side being a rapid development situation.
I understand. It's a very good question. I'm not sure that we have developed from a transportation group, developed one of those maps that you're talking about. Now, we have looked at the land use and again, our transportation plan really kind of dovetails with that. But as far as the timing, I don't think we've done anything. Very good question.
Yeah, so like when we're looking at the widensings on the east side, is that median density in 2045 or?
They're back to the land use plan.
There it is.
Yeah. Urban medium, urban low, that's the majority of the what we're seeing on the east side.
And I was just wondering, what's the, it doesn't look like there's a lot of commercial potential up there. I see one off Alameda, next use. Just to Matt's point about, you know, we're a sales tax city for right now. So just thinking in the future how you'll maintain that if there's opportunity to collect tax in that area.
Sure. I understand your question, but I'm not going to steer out of my lane.
Got you.
To address something that RDG probably needs to address.
Matt's on the main.
Can we go back to the widening, Matt? I was going to kind of piggyback on Councilor Peacock was saying that, you know, going to urge caution in pursuing a whole lot of these widensings. I mean, how many times can we widen these roads? In the future? There's a finite number of times they can be widened and whatever traffic they can hold, they can hold. If we're wanting to have a more mobile area, more bicycles, things like that, adding lanes to increase capacity on the roadways may in the near future reduce congestion in the long run. It's not, but it's not going to have that effect. It's going to keep people off of their bicycles because they've got driving as their preferred alternative. And you've got what's all induced demand. You add a new lane, new road to relieve congestion. In the long run, that congestion comes back, sometimes stronger than before because now you've made it easier to get from one place to another by a car. People are going to start moving on either side of that new route. And they're going to start using it. So, it's just, it's kind of like chasing the carrot on the stick. We're never actually going to catch it. If we're wanting to expand to multiple transportation modalities, then we need to be focused more heavily on that. Now, adding dedicated turn lanes, fantastic. Those are, you know, those are great. Adding more lanes to increase capacity. That's, that's going to come at a great cost with, because road projects are not cheap. I don't know how much that Franklin Road Bridge is anticipated to, to cost, but I would just kind of urge caution on jumping right into expanding lanes that, that much.
Let me answer a couple of quick questions. Quickly, I can answer the, the bridge over I-35. That's an ODOT project. That's not a city project planned. And I think that one of the slides, and I forget which one it was, that we, we had that in there, that is part of an ODOT, future ODOT project.
I was going to say the one over the lake.
Now, you're talking about the lake. All right. So, this one, this is a way out there. This is a 2045-type project. And this came about in 2023 when, during the tornadoes. And having life safety, public works, being able to get from this side of the lake, where if you followed the tornado path that went through my house.
To get over here, you had to go another 10 months.
So, that'd be paired with, say, the new fire station out and then?
Exactly. You know, it's just something, again, that we wanted to get on a map. We've even talked briefly with the, the folks at COMCD and go, "Hey, this is pie in the sky. We want to go ahead and show it now." Doesn't mean we're going to build it. It's a, it's a, it's a transportation plan that doc, that document lives and breathes. So, it can be changed. Again, like the 2014 projects that were non-committed, this one may fall off in, in the, in the future. But we at least wanted to put it on there to have the dialogue and have the discussion. Now, let me address the, the widening. And it's my fault that we didn't show this, but the urban arterial proposed is two-lane boulevard with side paths. Okay? So, we do want to try to have that boulevard concept as, as opposed to being raceway down through there.
Now, my knowledge of boulevards is from Wikipedia. So, are you talking about the trees on both sides too?
In the median, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Having, having a landscaped median. And again, this may be that opportunity where we talked about, you know, at a, for, for a few years, maybe it's only two lanes and then as traffic increases, residential development follows in that area. We add that, that outside lane through there. But we've already built the active transportation, side paths, things of that nature. So, the, your, your point is taken. Well taken, yeah.
I think, I think too, th- there's a few things that we didn't, we didn't necessarily highlight because this is a, this is a broad overview. But we talk about the roundabout policy. Roundabouts are fantastic because, and you'll have to forgive me, I used to work in a city where we had about 50 roundabouts. So, I, I grew to really love them. But roundabouts can be utilized as a type of improvement that improves flow in intersections. When you improve flow in intersections, it really makes the, the width of the road not as, it's still, it's still relevant, but you can get more throughput, right? So, there's, there's talk about that with the policy and exploring that. We've got talk about policy with access management. Access management is a great tool to be able to use, to get more juice out of the, the existing width of the roadway for longer. And then, you know, additionally, we, we have those comments about the collector network. And so, we have, we, we have sort of these subtle policy nudges that are all things that are, are heading in this direction. And, and where we've got widens listed, it's, it's more probably in this hope that we don't have to do that, right? It's, it's a hope that we don't have to. With the evolution of, with land use in the city, there's a hope that we don't have to do that. But it's still this idea that if, if inertia continues, then there, there is a certain level that you have to have some realization of what's going to happen.
We, we've got a second item on the agenda, so you have some questions, Councilor Home or Stephen?
Just about that, just about that part. So, like the Franklin Road Ri- Bridge being a, a project that is just kind of, something we may do in the future that may be real necessary, was that same discussion had about Rock Creek Road connecting from Flood to 24th through the airport?
There was a discussion, RDG, Marty with RDG, threw out the idea, "Hey, can we tunnel underneath the airport?"
Not unheard of.
The answer is yes. I'm, I'm not sure that we have enough money in the state of Oklahoma to build it.
I mean, I would assume it'd be like a mega, like a federal project to do something like that, but it would have a lot of significance if it could be done.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure the airport would be quite on board again. It's their airport. We kind of have to listen to them.
Sure. But that's just one that's out there. That may be a big future mega one. And then, just same thing on the grid pattern stuff. I think for many decades, we've developed neighborhoods to where there's one single entrance and everything is put out onto a one-single road. It has to be widened to four and five lanes and has to carry all the traffic for an entire mile's worth of development. Where in traditional city, like you mentioned, traditional city development like we're sitting in right now, all the streets, all the neighborhoods developed and all connected to each other. I don't know if that was planned and organized that way or if it just, because there's some that I look at where there's a street here and then there's another one that's just like, "Why didn't they, why didn't they line that up? That's so weird." But it does really help take pressure off of there being just one main road. And as Councilor Peacock and others are mentioning, the, you know, 10, that $10 million per mile to widen a two-lane street to four lanes. And then, for one square mile, you're talking $40 million just to widen all the arterials around it. So, if, if we're able to do a better job policy-wise about planning future developments so that they are better connected, so that not each individual development is just dumping their entire users, residents, shoppers onto one seamless street. Because as that map showed, all the streets that have the, the places where there's the most congestion and where there's the most crashes are the big wide four- and five-lane intersections with traffic signals. And so, where we're able to do roundabouts to reduce congestion and improve safety, I think is really a good thing. So, I, I like what I'm seeing and I agree that it being a guide for, for things is good, but maybe additional clarity on council's part about intent for widening and things like that in the future.
I think seeing some typical, typical sections to go along with some of the programs.
Those are in our report, yes.
Thank you, James and Brett, very in committed for all the hard work that you put into that.
Yeah, thank you all so much. That's wonderful.
Brett, how many pages are we up to?
That's the overview. 120-something is what it probably get close to. Did Jim really help? Jim actually did help a little bit.
This is going to be one amazing slide.
Let's get, let's get, we've got to go to item number two. Consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma Statutes under 525, 3074.
Second thing.
Thank you.